Good morning, everybody, and welcome. So glad to have you here this morning. Second to last board meeting of the year, and I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session to order on this November 10, 2020. And Brian, I think you've got a list ready for us there. Have your phone on. It'd be a good time to silence it. Thank you. Very privileged today. I don't see any elected officials. Very privileged to have Pastor Melvin Green with us from Relevant Connections Ministries, who's going to bring us our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of the flag. Pastor, thank you for being here. Stand if you're able.
All right, let us bow. Father, we acknowledge you as Lord. We acknowledge you as Lord over our life. We acknowledge you as Lord over the region called Paulding County. And Father, right now, we trust in you, and we don't lean to our own understanding. We thank you for releasing your Spirit upon us as we come to convene to handle the business of this region called Paulding County. And Father, I ask that you release the grace of the wisdom of Solomon, that we would be able to judge and discern wisely. Father, that we would be able to make Paulding County a better place for our residents. God, that you would just grant us the knowledge and the insight to your plans and your thoughts that you have for this region. And Father, we also thank you for a spirit of creativity as we're in a time of uncertainty. Give us the wisdom to create certainty for our citizens. Give us creative ideas. God, give us witty inventions, for your Word declares that wisdom dwells with prudence and finds out knowledge of witty inventions. So, Father, we thank you right now, in Jesus' name, for a spirit of creativity and a spirit of innovation and wisdom to be able to do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with you. And we all said amen in Jesus' name. The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What a beautiful prayer, Pastor Green. Thanks for bringing that to us this morning. Under minutes, the October 27, 2020 work session minutes and the October 27 board meeting minutes are available for your review. Under announcements, we'll start with Positively Paulding. We're going to recognize that little video here of Ms. Andrea Bowles, who was the November Employee of the Month.
He already heard my deep sound.
You know you have. Andrea is just a pleasure to be around. I mean, we've always, everybody likes Andrea in the office. She always keeps a chip on her shoulder. But we really do appreciate everything that you do in the office. I mean, this is, like I was talking to Kim earlier, that's just another day for Andrea. And that's, you know, it was special to LaRonda, but we see Andrea do things like this each and every day. So it is a testament to how she is every day.
Yay, it's fun. Also, I'm going to ask County Administrator Frank Baker to do the next announcement, which is also a presentation. He's the recipient here today, but it's Ride for Wishes and Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask Jaylee Stratton, did I get it right? She just got married, and congratulations. And I've known her for a long time, and it's always been Jaylee Welch. So I had to ask her again this morning, because I'm not really good with names. But if you and Felicia could come up to the front. Mr. Chairman, Board, on October 10, last month, we had our third annual Ride for Wishes here in Paulding County. And this is an event that the employees here in Paulding County give back to the community. And we've been working with Make-A-Wish Foundation for three years now. And so, everything that we collect, after we pay the expenses, goes to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And what was a prerequisite for us was that we wanted to make sure that all of the dollars that we sent to Make-A-Wish go to Make-A-Wish children here in Paulding County, so it stays in the county. So that was really, really important when we first got this thing kicked off. Now, as everybody knows, this has been a trying year. 2020's been trying for everyone. And there have been a lot of events that we've all seen that have been canceled due to COVID-19. And this was something that we felt like we wanted to try to accomplish. So, in fact, I posted on my Facebook page, it was, as Phil Collins would sing, "Against All Odds," because it was raining cats and dogs up to just about the time that we kicked this thing off. And there was a window where it didn't rain. So we had a number of riders that showed up, and we collected, after expenses, $8,828.18. And, you know, it's not a round number. It's got some sense in there. But the reason why we wanted to do that is we wanted to show everyone that everything goes to a zero balance in that account. And we want to thank Tabitha for helping us with that. We don't carry anything over, and the money that we do collect that goes for expenses is taken out, for example, the T-shirts for the riders, that sort of thing. And there's a few plaques that we give for sponsors. But we just want to thank everybody that's been involved with it. We didn't collect as much as we did last year, but still, we're very pleased on the amount. So at this point, I'd like to ask Jaylee if she'd like to come to the podium and make any comments, and then if we can take a picture, that would be great.
This has definitely been an interesting year, including in the wish-granting world. But due to COVID, in Georgia, we have over 1,000 kids waiting for a wish. And that is because our community is the immunocompromised and fragile community. So we're not able to send them to Disney World, which is our number-one wish. We're not able to have a lot of celebrity meet-and-greets, and of course, travel wishes are being postponed. So that number is growing. And even here in Paulding County, we have 23 kids waiting for a wish. So when you say "local," this is truly local here to Paulding. So now, more than ever, our Wish Kids need their community. I just can't thank you all enough for, despite the odds and the rain and everything else, coming together for Paulding Rights for Wishes and raising these funds, because our Wish Kids need you, and we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, my day. And Frank, and Felicia, all of you that did most of the organization, thank you.
Did a great job, I think you'll agree.
We have an invited guest this morning, and so glad to have Terry Tibbetts here, the Executive Director of the Airport. And he's going to give us our, I think, semi-annual update here, or quarterly, whatever it
But that just gives you a taste of some of the events and activities that take place
is.
Well, good morning. out there at the airport every day. Thank you all. So this is my 2020 calendar, 2020 year in review. I've got a short video I want to show first. Hopefully, the audio will come through here. Just a reminder, we are a subdivision, political subdivision of the state of Georgia. This is our mission statement, strategic vision. Give a quick shout-out to my Board of Directors, wonderful group of people, a combination of elected officials, county leaders, and people who are in the aviation business. And they do a great job of providing direction and vision and support for the airport. This is the view that you see from Highway 278. This is what our flying customers see when they come through the terminal after landing. This is a view from the air. I think everybody will agree that we've got a beautiful airport. It's a wonderful asset to Paulding County. And I hear people all the time say things like, you know, "We've got that airport. We should do something with it." I beg to differ. We do something with that airport every day. That airport is a wonderful asset to this county. Companies like Costco, Walmart, Home Depot, Dollar General, a host of other companies fly through the airport on a regular basis. You never see them, you never hear from them, but they're conducting business in Paulding County and contributing to the economic development and well-being of this county. And we're just proud to be able to support that. Our primary infrastructure improvement this year centers around the office building that is attached to Hangar 1. That's a picture of what it looked like in February of this year. And I'll remind you that this is the project that you also graciously contributed $20,000 to a month or two ago. And I thought you might want to see the results of that investment. This is a picture of the same area that shows the project after completion. This is the lobby of what we're now calling the Business Center. And this is the area where our flight school and our FAA Authorized Examiner now reside and conduct their business. This is also where our 24/7 Pilots Lounge is located. That's a very important new asset to the airport. On the north side of this office space that we built out is the Museum of Flight. They're now moved in and up and open for business. Business changes that occurred this year, we said goodbye to Paulding Jet Center after 10 years. Their contract came to a close in September. And so today, the Paulding County Airport Authority has taken over the management of the fuel farm and all FBO services. We have reflagged to a Phillips 66-branded station, if you will. In the automobile industry, that would be, you know, the flag, the sign that you would see as you drive up. In our case, the airplanes taxi up, and they know that they need to whip out their Phillips 66 card if they want to get special discounts. Looking ahead at where we're headed, this is an artist rendition, certainly not what the final look is going to be of the Chattahoochee Technical College, the Aviation Academy that they're going to be building there. But it is the early artist rendition of that school. We're happy to be a part of that. This has been a very involved process. We've got state, local governments involved, the federal government, the FAA, a number of state agencies, like the Technical College System of Georgia, Georgia Real Estate Commission. So this is, you know, you may say, "Well, nothing's happening out there," but we work on this every day, trying to make this a reality. And we're essentially done now with our piece of it and your piece of it. And this now passes over to Chattahoochee Tech to make this a reality. This is an artist rendition for the new hangar that the Museum of Flight hopefully will be constructing very soon. It'll be located just to the east of the main parking lot at the terminal building. We think that's going to be a beautiful addition to the airport. This is the upstairs of the area that we built out this year. So we have another 5,000 square feet. It's actually bigger than the downstairs area, because all of the mechanical rooms and whatnot downstairs took up about 1,000 square feet of that space. This is over 5,000 feet of uninterrupted space. We've got a lot of ideas on how to use this, but this will be our next major capital improvement as far as facilities are concerned. This is our five-to-10-year plan. I'm not going to say a whole lot about this, because I want to advertise that we're going to hold a public hearing on that design next Tuesday night. The public is invited. You are invited. And I'm going to brief this plan in a lot of detail and take as much time as the public wants to take. We're not setting a time limit on this. You may remember, when I first took this job, I did a town hall, and I stood there for three hours answering questions. If that's what it takes this time to give the public adequate time to have input on what our plans at the airport are, we want to do that. But I do want to point out, let's see, go back in the right direction. I do want to point out that this is essentially the same plan that was introduced in 2008, when the airport opened, as the further development of the airport. Airports are built incrementally. This is just the next big increment of building this airport. We are at capacity today. We've got a very large waiting list for T-hangers in particular. We have companies that would be interested in building hangers if we had locations, pads ready for building box hangers. So the main purpose of this is to supply the infrastructure that we need for the future to keep the airport a viable contributor to the economy and the tax base of Paulding County. I ask each time to brief our legal expenses, because as you know, under the intergovernmental agreement, y'all are paying for our legal expenses. That's part of the agreement. And we averaged, for the first three months of FY '21, which is July, August, and September, $2,557. That's down almost an order of magnitude from last year. So we are finally unwinding all of the litigation that has surrounded the airport for the past, what, seven years now. It's a very slow and tedious process. It has to be done right. You can't just wake up one day and say, "Okay, we're done. Let's move on." So we are working through that, but it is in the process of coming to a close, and we're very happy about that. My staff and I want to express our sincere appreciation to you guys. Y'all have been so supportive to us this year. You've answered every need that we've had. You funded every request that I have brought to you. I think it has been to the benefit of the airport, the community, and the county, and to the economic development of this community. But probably, all of your department heads could say the same thing. You know, if you'd just fund every wish list that they've got, you could do great things. And we know that money is always limited, and we try to be very reasonable in our requests that we bring to you. But again, you have just, you have absolutely gone above and beyond. And that's noticed by us, and we appreciate it. Go Team Paulding. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the status of the airport or any other topic related to the airport. Frank, how'd I do? Under 10 minutes?
You were at nine minutes. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right.
Good job.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We have no bid awards today. Reports from committees and departments, none. Public participation on agenda items, no one has signed up. Under the consent agenda, consideration of several items here to renew. Item number two is to renew the haul and disposal contract with BFI Transfer Systems of Georgia, Republic Services of Georgia, with a 3.04% increase effective December 1, 2020. Mr. Green is in charge of that one. Item number three is to authorize the chairman to enter into a non-refundable contract. Let me start over. Authorize the chairman to enter into a non-reimbursable contract for acquisition of right-of-way with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Burnt Hickory Road-Brownsville Extension and Stout Parkway Intersection project. And that's Post 4. Mr. Jones is in charge. Item number four is to authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding for the Pace Road Pharmacy Development in Post 1, also Mr. Jones. Item number five is to adopt the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' proposed regular meeting schedule for the 2021 calendar year. Ms. Meredith in charge. Number six is to adopt the proposed application and public hearing dates for the Planning Commission, the Planning Board of Appeals, the Stream Buffer Development Waiver Review Committee, and the Development Waiver Review Committee for the 2021 calendar year. Ms. Lippman. Item number seven is to approve the Waterworks Group LLC contract for Amendment Number Four for Engineering Services Agreement for Water System Staff Augmentation. Ms. Pollard is in charge, Ms. Pollard is in charge of that one. Number eight is to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Enclave at Dooley Road LLC for the Enclave subdivision in Post 4. Mr. Jones is in charge. And number nine is authorize the chairman to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the developer of Thompson Estate subdivision, also in Post 4. Item number 10 is to declare the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. Ms. Pollard handles that. There's, on the back table, the credenza there, there's the item names, makes and models, and all the serial numbers for your review if you're interested. Would any of the post commissioners like to move any of the consent agenda items that we just covered to regular business? Hearing, no one would be interested in that. We'll leave them where they are for the afternoon vote. Under old business, we have none. Under new business... Item number 11 is discuss action to adopt Resolution 20-41, authorizing the filing of an application with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Section 5311 of the Federal Transit Laws, under Chapter 53 of Title 49 of the United States Code. Ms. Pollard to report. Thank you.
Good morning. This is routine. This grant comes to you every year. It's to fund the operations of the transit program for Paulding County, and it's a 50% federal grant. Normally, they tell us what we're going to get, and that's included in the application. This time, there must be a little bit of flexibility there. So they've asked us to apply for all of operations, and then they'll award in the future, once they get all the applications in. We're also requesting two buses, replacement buses, that will... The state pays 80%, no, the federal pays 80% of those buses, state pays 10%, and then we're left with 10%. So it's about $5,200 a bus is our participation. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions, concerns? Thank you for the backup material on that. Moving on to item number 12, discuss action to adopt Ordinance 20-12, amending Chapter 6 of the official Paulding County Code to provide for the issuance of alcohol manufacturing license for breweries for the production and sale of malt beverages. Chief Hess from our Marshals Department is going to report.
Thank you. We're excited about this one. We've spent a lot of time trying to get this thing together. We've been working on some of our ordinances this year, and we've done some things with our alcohol ordinances, as far as like farm wineries, things of that nature. So what we'd like to do is have an amendment to create a malt beverage manufacturer's license, which would allow breweries, small breweries, to come in here. We've got a lot of new, as our county attorney, Jason Phillips, likes to refer to them as exotics. And I like the way he does that, because there's things that are popping up that have never been around before. So to have those businesses come into our county is pretty important. So we would like, recommend approval of this amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Mr. Phillips, is there anything you'd like to add for clarification?
Just that when you're dealing with alcohol regulation in the state of Georgia, Georgia has traditionally, probably since the days of the ending of prohibition, created a three-tier system for alcohol businesses. You can either make it, you can distribute it wholesale, or you can distribute it at retail. So it's got to be one of those three things, make it wholesale or retail, and those three levels are not allowed to blend. Well, the General Assembly has created some exceptions to that, and this brewery situation combines a manufacturer of beer with the possibility of distributing it retail as well. So you can make beer there, and that folks can go to a brewery and go to the taproom and have beer on the premises. They can also buy up to a case per day, and those limitations are set by state law. So this ordinance allows us to make that happen in Paulding County.
Thank you. Any questions? You're good. All right. Thanks, Chief Hess. Appreciate the report. And you've got the next one, too. Number 13, which is discuss action to adopt Ordinance 20-13, amending the tall grass ordinances to lower the maximum vegetation height limit and for other purposes. I know you've had fun with this one.
Yes, sir. That's correct. What we'd like to propose is to lower the maximum height down to 18 inches. This provision shall apply to all properties and lots located within platted subdivisions only on which a building or residence is constructed. What we've found in the past several years is that a lot of times, we get calls for tall grass violations, and upon our arrival, it's actually not in violation. It's close. It's usually around 18 to 20 inches, which means we can't really address it. The problem is, we've already gone out there. We've looked at it, but we know we're going to have to come back, do a report, and then a week later, drive all the way back out there, do a follow-up, and then do another report. It takes a lot of time and a lot of money, with wear and tear on gas, vehicles, things of that nature. And we've also had some discussion with citizens about potentially lowering this. And what we found is if we're already going out there at the 18 to 20 inches, let's just go ahead and lower that, so we can address it, save the county a lot of time and money, and help the citizens out a little bit as well. So we'd recommend that we adopt this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that as well.
Appears to be no questions. I told you I'd get my grass cut, Trevor. You don't have to keep doing it like this.
Yeah. I'll be there soon. Thank you.
Thank you. New business item number 14, discuss action to approve the development agreement with PR Land Investments LLC for construction of a water main along a portion of the Seven Hills Connector, located in Post 4. And Ms. Ashmore is going to tell us about this one.
First, we'll go with the picture. PR Land Investments is the developer of a 33-acre tract on Seven Hills Connector, east of Cedar Crest Road, and that is zoned, was zoned in 2019 to the R-55 zoning category. The developer would, under our regulations, be required to extend an 8-inch water main to serve their property, but there is a zoning stipulation requiring them to enter into a development agreement with us for the upsizing of that line. Our long-term forecasts call for a 16-inch water main along Seven Hills. And so we have been working with the developer on a cost-sharing agreement, and this is the culmination of efforts on that. But they also address a couple of things that have been weaknesses in some of our previous development agreements, and have addressed it in a way we hope will eliminate those weaknesses. One is to clearly define our responsibilities, such that you know upfront what our responsibilities are, and financially, what our responsibilities are, and what the developer's responsibilities are. In this case, based on analysis and estimates of installing that line, an equitable cost-sharing is for us to...
in 2019 to the R55 zoning category. The developer would, under our regulations, be required to extend an eight-inch water main to serve their property, but there is a zoning stipulation requiring them to enter into a development agreement with us for the upsizing of that line. Our long-term forecasts call for a 16-inch water main along Seven Hills, and so we're, we are, we've been working with the developer on a cost-sharing agreement, and this is the culmination of efforts on that. But they also address a couple of things that have been weaknesses in some of our previous development agreements, and have addressed it in a, in a way we hope will, will eliminate those weaknesses. One is to clearly define our responsibilities, such that you know upfront what our responsibilities are, and what, financially, what our responsibilities are, and what the developer's responsibilities are. In this case, based on an analysis and estimates of installing that line, an equitable cost-sharing is for us to provide materials. We provide, we provide the pipe and the appurtenances, and we separate that, and then the developer is responsible for the, for the installation of that line. Money's actually going to be placed into escrow upfront for, for that cost-sharing. Now, we will also pay for that on the western end of the, of the project. The county will pay for the crossing on that end, and the developer pays for the crossing back over to serve their, their property. You'll see that this 16 is, is extended to the point where it will also make water service accessible to the Paulding County Board of Education properties that are located along, along Seven Hills. Because of a number of factors that are impacting our ability to complete the project, we have, have worked up a decision tree that will allow us to define upfront what will happen if something is not available. For example, there is a water line that's going to be constructed from Cedar Crest along Seven Hills to that end of this extension, and then there's the easements in the right-of-way for the water main construction itself. So there is a decision tree in the agreement that basically the water main will either be constructed, as it's shown on this map. It could be constructed from Prescott Drive down to the, down to the development. Should that, should those not be available, the developer has the option of serving their property from Oakland subdivision, and then constructing, and then constructing the water main at a later, at, further out in their development, or their, depending on the, on the timing, it could be that their water service comes in from Oakland, and then they will relinquish their contribution to the escrow, to the county, so that the county has the funds available to complete that construction. Assignment has also been a concern in some of our previous development agreements. This, we've worked closely with Jason over the last couple of weeks, trying to get this, get these terms so that they work for the county and for the, for the developer. And in this case, the assignment provisions limits any assignment to entities which are, which include a provision where Piedmont, where Piedmont Residential has the obligation to buy the lots for that development. Any other assignment has to have the county's written approval. We've also addressed term in this, and the, this development, this development agreement will expire either on the completion of this water line or 24 months. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Maybe more information than you wanted.
I've forgotten the timing. When is, when is that going to take place?
Actually, it's, it is expected to begin and, and be done in, within the next year. But should it not be initiated in 24 months, then this development agreement would, would expire.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Ashmore. I don't see Ms. Shandra Khan in the audience to speak on retention ponds. So we'll say that's the conclusion of our regular business, and no one to speak on non-agenda items. We don't have a requirement to go into executive session this morning. I would like to call in the county administrator to discuss a couple of events that are coming up, and then we'll follow on with the post commissioners with any comments or announcements they want to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got just a couple. First, I want to wish the chairman a happy birthday today. It's not actually his personal birthday, but it's a Marine Corps birthday, so happy birthday, Chairman.
245 years old.
You don't look a day over 240, Dave.
I'll get you.
The couple items I have are going to take place tomorrow. One is a veteran program that's going to take place at 11 o'clock, actually 11:11. It's going to be out in the pavilion area of Veterans Park. So if anybody can, has some free time and they can come out, we'd love to have them come out for that. And then there'll be a secondary presentation at 6:00 PM, between 6:00 and 6:30. There's going to be a lighting of a veteran's tree at the same location. So we're very excited about that. It's the first time we've ever done it. There was a Christmas tree that was purchased, a live tree, back in January of this year, and it's now, I think, about 16 feet, maybe 14 to 16 feet. And we'll have red, white, and blue lights on it, and I want to thank Rebecca and her staff for getting that done. But we'll have a very short presentation around the 6 o'clock hour tomorrow night, and we hope the weather will, will cooperate with us. And the last thing I had, Mr. Chairman, was because of the date of this, I want to go ahead and, get this out for Sheriff Gullidge. Like we do with Make-A-Wish, the sheriff and his staff and his office, they also do something to give back to the community. It's the Paulding Cops for Kids, and that's going to be, take place on December 12th. And if you have any questions about that, you can contact Lieutenant Tracy Parker at the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. So appreciate the ability to make those announcements. And like I said, that's going to happen on December 12th, and our next meeting will be just a couple days before that event. So I'm going to go ahead and get that information out for the sheriff.
Thanks, Frank. I want to start with post one, then, and talk about whatever you'd like.
Whatever I'd like. All right. I'm feeling a little bit nostalgic up here today. When you get elected to office, you, you kind of make a mental note of your first, your first meeting, your first budget, your first, first time you go down four to one on a vote. As you get towards the end of it, I guess you start thinking about your lasts. And so being the last rides for wishes when they were presenting the check, I just, Frank, I just want to say thank you for your leadership there. Your, that is an example of the, the positive impact that you've had on our county the last couple of years, and you and the leadership with the employees. I'm excited of the way that our people participate with that such a good cause. We also had a last airport update for me today. Terry's going to miss me words, more than words can explain. At least more than words appropriate for the broadcast, right, Terry? But last week, we had, last week, we had the, the final election before I, before I'm done with my time here, and I, I see Deidra and Lacey in the room, and I'm so glad to see you up there. Deidra's a real encourager. She leaves these Bible verses and words of encouragement for us on a regular basis. And I was thinking about it. I've, I'm in a select group of people because I've had the opportunity now, we all are actually, get to deal with Deidra and her staff as citizens, as candidates, and elected officials. And even, I guess, a fourth, a fourth way is from a managerial point of view. And Deidra, I just appreciate all that you do, and all that your team does, and even Lacey. Like, y'all are great, and, and it's, there's a lot going on with elections right now, and there's a lot of stuff that's up in the air. And we'll find out soon what, what's going on. I know there are runoffs, and Deidra would want me to make the announcement that there's going to be at least one runoff election coming up, and you'll want to make sure you pay attention to that because your voice is important in that. But with all going on and a lot of uncertainty, I love the way your, your, your group down there operates. I go down on election days, and I just kind of stick my head in, and I'm like, is everything okay? And Deidra gives me a thumbs up, and Lacey gives me a thumbs up, and then I get out of the way because it, you can get run over down there if you're not careful. But I do appreciate the way you guys do that. You guys are a wonderful example of how government serves the people, and you do a great job. And then Frank mentioned tomorrow is Veterans Day, and one of the groups of people that I've had, and I don't want to single out one group of veterans over another, but I've come to really appreciate Vietnam veterans. The last few years, they didn't get a lot of the treatment that they deserve, and got maybe not necessarily appreciated like they should. So if you see, you know, sometimes the, the hats, Terry's dad has a World War II hat. Dave's got his World War I hat. But if you see, if you see a Vietnam veteran out tomorrow, you know, it's never too late to say welcome home, and, and I know that means a lot. And if you see a veteran, say thank you. They've done a lot for our country. So, how about you, Sandy?
It's hard to follow there, those two.
He stole all my thunder. I was just going to say Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans out there. If you do see a veteran, I don't care if it's today, tomorrow, next week, next month, just say something to them. We need to appreciate them. They fought for our freedom. That's why we're here today, and they need to know they're appreciated. They've been through a lot.
Thanks, Sandy. Let's move over to post three. Yeah, I was actually thinking about Deidra and them also, and I was, I'm thankful for what they did. But also, is there a couple of dates you can throw out? I can't remember. It's the 7th for registration for the runoff. There's a couple of critical dates.
We are planning for a December 1st state runoff. There will be no registration deadline for that because it is a state election. The federal election will be January the 5th. The registration deadline for that is December 7, and we will have 21 days of early voting, and that will begin on December the 14th. Going back to the December 1st runoff, we will have, hopefully, three days of early voting, which will be the day, the week of Thanksgiving. So that'll be the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. All early voting will be done here. There will be no satellite locations, but we're gearing up and ready to go.
Thank you. And where is that, is that posted on your websites?
It will be after we officially certify. We will be certifying tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday at 10:00 AM. No, I'm sorry, tomorrow at 10:00 AM, and then we'll be doing a risk-limiting audit on Thursday.
So sorry to put you on the spot, but you're a good person to put on the spot. And it's never too early to start getting those dates out there because, I mean, it's just like Ron said, that's, that's the most important thing as a citizen that you can do, to get out and, you know, let your voice be heard, and that's the only way you can make it be heard. And thank you for what you guys do. Oh, and thanks, veterans. And next is Commissioner Stover, who is going to speak via telephone.
Yeah, I just want to make everyone aware of the Old and Rotary Dallas, City of Dallas Christmas Parade. I've had a lot of calls on it. It is still going to happen this year. Application cutoff date is November 15th, so right around the corner. Of course, the date of the parade is December the 5th. So I just wanted to let everyone know that it is still going to happen this year, given COVID the way it is. So unless something changes, everybody come out and see Santa Claus.
Thanks so much, Brian. We miss you. So I'll wrap things up with an announcement from the chamber. Stacy Hamby was here last meeting, but, and she comes quite often. She and her team have put together an event on Saturday, the 14th, called Hearts for Heroes. And it's kind of a combination of some of the things that have been said about veterans. We've got a great Veterans Park out here that the event's tomorrow going to be on with names of those that have contributed in several wars on the monument out there that Scott Green and his team got, got out there. But it's not just about veterans. It's also about our first responders from Hiram and Dallas, our marshal, and our sheriff's office, fire department. It'll be a motorcade leaving here and going out to the airport where the event will take place, beginning at 11:30. There'll be some vendors out there, food trucks, American Legion presence. So it is a first inaugural, and I think it'll be a great time. So pray for good weather. Also, as a tribute to veterans, we do have a little video, but for copyright laws, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and a second we'll vote, and then we'll watch the videos. Have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Listen up.